We have an extra.
I, uh, you have a sequence in your folders yesterday. You can look at mine if you want.
That's all, I'll just go over this real quick. I didn't know where it was.
Just the two budgets.
Okay.
Is Ron here? He's on his way.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for that.
Can I go to Wisconsin?
That's after that for me.
It's not going to be on the front.
So, I don't know. Did they get the, this one that you've done for the hub?
Yeah, they have that one. You're gonna need copies of it.
Well, I'm leaving it. They have yours.
Mona did some changes, so that's what she bring her more. Or her and I did some.
Alright, so, this one, I think she said she had that for, like, the hub for next year that we're gonna wanna discuss.
Okay.
Hey, Ron.
And then, the red highlight is, like, the amendment stuff. And then, the yellow is, like, the sunset stuff. And these ones up above, I have no idea what is in my budget. But I don't dictate those amounts necessarily. Those all, you guys pay all those, right? So.
So we pay 'em, then we submit to the region to get rid of that.
Not the, not the top one, though, is it?
Are you talking on the...
The, it's the OO2.
Oh, the general stuff, that's more with Tony.
Yeah.
That's the ones from, uh, like, relief and general assistance. Comes to the, sure, it's up to the 17.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm done with all your three, four.
Oh, yeah.
So, Haley, where, because I didn't do anything with those for next year?
Well, I mean, the need, unless I need to talk to...
Cause they've always been on my budget, so I've just kind of...
Some of those that come up, like, middle and stuff, like...
Yeah. So I, I mean, I zeroed...
One of those we guess at.
Yeah, I zeroed all of them out, so I don't know if that's...
That's fine. I probably need to put something in there just in case.
So.
Yeah, thanks for getting that one out.
Polls. Oh, sure, sure.
Okay, uh, back to being the supervisor. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All the favors say aye.
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 Okay, here.
You guys wanna start? Do you guys wanna start with MHDD, or do you wanna start with the hub? MHDD is gonna be faster.
Alright then. MHDD it is.
Alright, so, the red highlighted is going to be the amendment that we're going to need to make sure that, with everything sunsetting, that there is enough in there should people leave, if we have to pay out vacation, all that kinda stuff. Um, also for the retention that got discussed, um, for people who stay each month. I don't know, are you guys aware of the retention amounts that were discussed, or just, Haley, just you?
Just Ron and I and you.
Okay. So, HHS and the Regional Governing Board approved because Missy, Sarah, and I, as well as Michelle, and I'm not sure what's gonna happen with Michelle with retention, because technically, she's not a regional employee in the sense of, she's technically a provider, so it's different. But me, Sarah, and Missy, um, will get retention pay. So basically, for every month that we stay until June 30th, we will get X amount paid out at the end of the month. So if we stay till the end of February, we get X amount. If we stay till the end of March, we get X amount. And so on and so forth until June, because as of June 30th, we no longer have jobs. Um, and so, that is built in to this as well. And then there was other things, indirect costs, that I think that was pulled from the cost report of 23, right?
Yeah, there was spending authority in that one, so...
There was, but only 18. And the cost report had it listed at, like, 25, I think, 24. So that got bumped up. And then, um, May, I'll have to come to you guys probably next week, week after, closer to May. So May wants the coordinators to go to NATCON, which is like the National Council for, like, Mental Health, uh, out in Philadelphia this year, cause it will be the last year for any of us to do that. So I'll come to you guys for approval for an out-of-state training. And so that got put in here as well for the...
Reestimate.
For the reestimate. But again, all of these are reimbursed by the region. So these do not come back to the county to pay. Um, and then, so that's the reestimate for the budget amendment that we'll have to go through. And then the 25, 26 request, that also includes the spending authority. So if all of us are still here June 30th, and then everything has to obviously get paid out in July, right? For the payouts, the last two weeks of pay, so on and so forth. The final, like, fuel bill, uh, the final phone bill, things like that. So this is just basically spending authority to be able to pay out those final payments after June 30th. Did I explain all that correctly?
Cause we don't wanna be in the negative and then wait for, like, HHS. We wanna have it all taken care of with the region before they dissolve.
Well, that's what I was wondering about, then. In July, then, or like you said, the paychecks and everything, the last two weeks of June, that'll come... Will the county get reimbursed then from the region in July?
Cause we're gonna just kinda submit that as a...
So, that is part of this reestimate, is those are all already included. So the money will already be here.
Okay, got it.
And, but there has to be the spending authority in 25, 26. So you guys will not get paid this 25, 26 amount after the fact. It'll be in the fourth quarter payment.
Cause usually they pay us upfront, so we have that operating account money.
Yes.
I understand. Now, the only other question is that, what happens if it's one way or another, too much?
That's where we're, we're rather, we would rather have a cushion on our end and then have to pay it back to them versus the other way around.
Yep, because that will all get kinda figured out after, of like, if there is a surplus, where that goes versus trying to try to go, okay, who are we supposed to get this money from?
On our side, once, once the allegiance got up, there's nobody to give us a check.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's where the reestimate, plus the spending authority comes from, to make sure both sides are covered. So the county is not left holding the bag.
Okay. That makes sense.
So. Any questions, um, the, for the... I left the temp, which is Bethany, I left that at 5,000, cause she typically does not go over that. And at this point, it's been less than a thousand dollars for the whole year. So for, I just put, for the spending authority, like, $500 total, because I, I mean, depending upon when time sheets and things like that get turned in, to make sure that there's enough to cover.
Uh, who's saying the retirements?
Ray is asking me to keep signing them.
So with that, it is going to be very, 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 I cannot stress enough, important that if, say, say June time sheets, for instance, if they get turned in August, September, like historically they have, you're not getting paid. The county's not gonna get paid, and so you guys will probably be left holding...
Can't hear from fund, but no longer exists.
Yes.
So we're trying to just maintain communication to let her know when the last time to turn in your checks.
So, it's, yeah. So it's gonna be super-duper important that those get timed, turned in, super timely. So. Any other questions, kind of, on... Do I have to come back in to do a budget amendment stuff, or will this suffice for that?
Cause you and I already talked about what line items need the cushion. And so, like I said, I kinda wanted to push it off a little bit, since we just had one.
No, like, I, obviously you're not gonna be doing the budget amendment right away, but do I need to come back in and present budget amendment, or when you do the next one?
Yeah. As long as they know ahead what, why I'm putting the spending authority in and...
Yeah, just so I know if I have to come back. I know you just did one, so you're not gonna be doing one immediately.
No, that timing, I should've pushed that one off a little bit more.
So, we're good to go on that one? Alright, so now the one that's gonna take some conversation. Alright. So, the hub. At this moment, the way that this budget is set up is that it sunsets June 30th. However, it is unknown at this time what, um, will be funded, what won't be funded. There has been conversation that existing contracts, so there is an existing contract with the hub at this moment, along with all the other providers, that existing contracts to be honored for six months to a year. Um, I have not heard if it's a year with finality. Last I heard, six months, but I wanna say it's a year. So, we have a choice of, does the hub existing contract that will sunset with the region, but get picked up by the ASO as an honored contract, do we set up this budget for it to stay in existence for six months to a year? Why the ASO kind of figures out if that's something that they wanna continue to fund as a full-time person, what have you? Do we just sunset it? I know there had been talk with the ASO, um, if we got ASO, was it gonna be sunsetted? Was it gonna not be? So, but I don't know how you guys feel about it, what you guys want me to do with it? Cause ultimately, it's the board's decision of, no, we wanna do it for six months to a year, see what happens, or close the doors.
Cause we'll have to put the bill in for those six months, correct?
No. Because the ASO is honoring contracts.
Okay. But I thought that was still unknown for the six months to a year.
Well, it's...
It is.
It's, it's unknown, but, so with contracts being honored, but it's not necessarily a Medicaid provider, there's lots of unknowns. So, the second piece of that is, so, okay, we can set it up as a full budget year, and then if we find out, they're gonna talk to providers in March, if we find out closer to June 30th, nope. You know, there, it's, nothing is going to be funded, okay? Then it closes down June 30th, and we're out, nothing, right? If it's, oh no, we want, we wanna keep that, and we're gonna fund that, right? Then, or yes, that contract's gonna be honored, and this is where that money's gonna come from, right? Then that budget is set up as such. Or if it's, you know, like, there's, there's been issues that haven't been resolved over the X amount of years, sunset it. I don't, I don't know. Ultimately, like I said, it's, it's you guys' decision.
Now, I personally, and this kinda goes into two budgets. It's possibly hub budget and... I'm not quite sure how it worked out with, uh, Sarah...
It didn't.
Being the... She was originally county social services, and then they kinda, we kinda combined that in with the veterans. So I don't know...
At, at this moment, from my understanding, so that VAGA position is combined, and it's all under Courtney. Sarah created what was called, like, a navigator, job description, and Haley, correct me if I'm wrong, kinda when she turned it in, it was kinda like there's, like, there's not finances to finance that position. So as far as I'm aware, that's dead in the water. So I don't know if...
We have always had, uh, the, the county social services. I would like to keep that moving. But the only way I see to try to keep it moving is we would have to separate it back from veterans. So veterans would be veterans, social services would be social services. And we would have to look and see if we would have the money to fund it, and it would be along the lines of the hub, somewhere in there. We would...
So does that then create two positions within the hub, or Michelle is out and Sarah's in? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I haven't got, I haven't got that far in it of thinking through it all.
Well, and the reason I'm asking is just because if we're changing budgetary stuff, I need to know the numbers to be able to come back to present to you guys, right? Before budget season is over.
Well, and it affects Courtney, cause she's full-time because of the two.
Yep, because when they, when it was county social ser, when it was, yeah, just social services prior, it was only a percentage. It was like 85, 15. So financially, to split them again, is that fiscally a thing to have it be its own full-time position? Versus what she had kind of created with that navigator was to kind of interact almost in a hub-type way, right, with the mental health liaison through the jail, right? So if there's referrals, if there's this, to kinda help navigate the system, if you will, so it's not specific to mental health, so it doesn't have to be levied mental health dollars. It's general, correct me if I'm wrong here, Haley, general fund-type dollars, right, that could be used, such as county, such as the GA dollars, what have you. And it would fall under Courtney's purview.
Twenty years ago. How long has the region been around now?
Ten.
Been around ten. So twenty years ago, we had social services. And they ran under their own budget and everything. What did we have, two or three people over there over the years? That was across from the courthouse?
Yeah, Mary.
Yep, yep.
Well, I mean, cause Sarah's been here ten, and Carol was there before that, so I don't know. Yeah, and then...
At least she did both still, though. It was GA and MHDB, could all work.
It was all one.
Cause we levied our own.
Mm-hmm.
Not with the region, we were our own.
You answered my question.
Yep. I was gonna say, cause before, yeah, the dollars were county dollars, before it was, everybody's gonna play in a sandbox together.
But I think it was still, part of it was still MHDB levy, and some of it was general.
Yes.
Okay.
Even back then.
That answers my question.
Then once it went to the region, we still had our own levying authority, but it was kinda controlled through the region as far as our caps and all that.
I, I could see that if we... We could keep, some of it would be hub money, and for all we know, these people are gonna come in and say, yep, we're gonna...
So that's my question, how do you guys want me to do this budget? Is it sunsetted? Is it create it for one full-time, create it for two full-time, and hope for the best? What do you guys want me to do?
Oh, boy. I would say if you could create a budget for...
Would you just want them to show the revenues, since you're not sure?
Yes, yeah.
Right? Mm-hmm.
I mean, cause before it offset the revenue.
So.
It would give us something to look at if, if we had a budget for a full-time person.
Okay, so for one...
That's gonna come out of the general.
Well, and that, that's the, that's the issue. Until we get, until we hear from everybody here, and we know where we're sitting with what people want this year, if we have...
Well, because, yes, do you guys want the...
But I think we could look at the budget. We could look at what, what would be estimated at. Cause we know what it's, what it's going to, putting a sunset on it. It just goes away.
Well, so even if we create it for one full-time, and then closer to, we find out, ASO is not going to pay for any of it. It's still, potentially, sunsets June 30th, right? And that budget authority is still there, obviously. But, and we won't be spending all of this year's money that's been already given, right? Because there won't be a payment for next year.
Right.
But there will be, and Haley, correct me if I'm wrong, there should be a surplus left over from this year that will, for those, to be able to pay out those accruals.
Yep. But it shouldn't be a huge, it wouldn't definitely not be a surplus for a full-time position.
No, but I'm saying, to, if it sunsets, we'll have the ability to sunset it and pay those last round of bills.
Same like we did with the watershed, remember, we had to still...
Yep. So, but then if it's full-time, then at least we created the spending authority. So, because, yeah, do you guys, if...
I, I don't.
If we had the money, and it's something that we could say, I'm gonna say, bring Michelle back full-time, because the only reason she got a different job was because of the potential of losing her job, right? She doesn't want to go anywhere, she does, she wants to be here full-time, but it's one of those, if I'm going to lose a job, I can't sit and wait. So, if it's something that we can have somebody full-time, whether it's Michelle, whether it's Sarah, whatever that looks like, right? Is that something that you guys want to stay in existence? Do you guys see the benefit? Ron, I know you and I had talked when...
I, I see the benefit myself, uh...
And we had talked about kind of...
But as...
Creating some different, some alternate pieces of it, with, like, some care coordination, like, things like that. We had talked about kind of branching out, but then we didn't branch out because the end is nigh, right? So, sorry, I didn't mean to...
We're kinda putting the cart before the horse, because we don't know the funding through the mental health district. They may come and say, we're gonna fund the whole thing, and we don't.
Which is, which is true, but...
Are they indicating when they're gonna make a decision?
Uh, they'll talk to, they'll talk to, they'll talk to providers. The last town hall, they said that they would talk to providers in March.
March.
Which doesn't help us.
Which doesn't help us.
No, it doesn't help at all.
And, and I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse, Ron. My biggest thing is if we, as a county, right, do not find the program itself beneficial or see ways to branch out in advance if it is paid for, then I don't want to waste everybody's time and give false hope to anyone that, hey, we could do this if there ends up being funding, versus, no, it's just sunsetting, right? Because I'm not trying to dangle a carrot that doesn't actually exist if it's not seen as beneficial. Does that make sense?
Yes, does.
So you find the benefit. I know, first you haven't been here long enough.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to do some more research, but...
So, the hub, five, has it been five years, six?
It's been around five, six years.
Okay. So it was created living your model as kind of a crisis walk-in, right? Anybody who needs kind of resources, de-escalation, things like that. Ron, you were kind of...
Right down the hole.
Yeah, right down there. You were the leader, I'll let you kind of explain a little bit more.
We, we're just to fill in the gaps, and it would be mental health. With the, the people that were in the hub used to go down, and of course, the clerk of court can't tell them. They could tell them if there was a mental health hearing, but they couldn't tell them who it was with. But they used to go to the courthouse, they could talk to the families of people for hearings, they could talk to the person. And we would be the, the gap, the gap between services. And we were doing the same thing in the jail with the simple misdemeanor arrests that were in the door out before, you know, they were released, unproved to appear. Uh, and we were trying to fill that gap. If they answered, they do a screening when they come into jail if, if they have any mental health needs, and are they currently getting services, or is it something that's...
So you connected as a liaison to get them from what point do you see?
Yes.
Yep. We had great success, and then...
COVID.
COVID came. Some of that we have lost, uh, like, the, the hearings on a regular basis in the courthouse, that is all done...
Virtually.
Virtual hearings now. Occasionally, they'll have one, but not very often. Uh, so we lost that piece. And that was a pretty big piece. The jail still insists, the jail would have to get back into the routine of calling the hub person. You know, okay, this person, and all they could do is try. You know, if they were released, well, here's the information, you can try to call them. And if they say, I'm fine, I don't need services, well, you try. That piece can still be there. They are currently doing, uh, people from the abbey center.
Abbey Center's right next door to the hub, so...
Okay.
So if somebody comes in the abbey that may need some help getting reconnected in the mental health system, this person sits down, and they go through all the forms and everything with the region.
DHS.
DHS and everybody.
All the things.
And let's say through the conversation, they, they're a veteran, and there's some benefit, we can just walk them down the hall.
To veterans, right.
Talk to the veteran, or...
Food bank.
I don't have any, I don't have any money, I don't have any food. You know, somebody from the food pantry, uh, it, it connects a lot of people up. I'm 100% behind trying to help folks with a mental health...
So they would go to this, this organization for guidance as to where do I need to go with other services?
And they, and they have all the connections. And, and we have found over time that that is the biggest issue with our mental health system is, is how do I access it? And I don't...
And the funding, the funding for this came from...
So it comes from the region at this point, so...
Okay, it's just going away.
Which is going away. June, yep, June 30th it sunset. So right now, the region...
They're even for six months.
Yep.
But we don't know that.
But is that just them kicking the can down the road type of thing? With the six months saying that, we don't know?
We, that's, that's the, that's the, I don't know.
From a monetary standpoint, is it, does it make more sense to, to plan on it? And then put the money in there than it is to try to go back and then...
Don't spend it, yeah, otherwise we definitely...
Create something later, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why it was the, do we create it as if it's still going to exist? Versus trying to figure it out after the fact.
For me, it...
I mean, to me, I could be putting the revenue estimate in too.
And not use it, then that just goes away.
If we don't get that revenue, otherwise it's gonna look like a burden to our general fund.
Catastrophe, we had to go through and do all that, so I would lean towards what's...
Create it.
Create it, do what we gotta do, and then, and then we're prepared, you know, for either scenario, whatever.
So are you okay with us putting in the scenario that we're gonna get the revenue as well? Because otherwise, it's gonna definitely be a burden on our general fund.
Yes, otherwise it'd be all general fund money, that's the big draw.
I mean, if, if that's gonna be the cul, you know, the reasoning, if you're gonna sunset it, if we know we're not getting that funding, then it's just kind of a wash.
And we'll know before June 30th whether or not, yes, there will be, at least, we better know before June 30th. Like, yes, there will be some kind of, somebody's going to fund the county to, to pay for this, right? Or no, we won't. So, I mean, there will still be more than likely, um, until we have the final absolutely, yes, we are going to have the money, right? My guess is Michelle will stay part-time and keep trying to kind of, whether she stays doing the job she's doing or finding something else, I don't know. Or whether or not she'll be like, if there's hope, I'll come back full-time. I don't, I don't know what she'll ultimately do, but if, you know, I also don't want, cause you had talked about... I don't, I don't know what she'll ultimately do, but if, you know, I also don't want, because you had talked about like social services, I'm not gonna pit Sarah and Michelle against one another.
There's no sense in that.
Like, that's, that's not gonna be a thing, it's not gonna be, oh, sorry, we're, you know, saving social services and Sarah was here first, so, you know, pack your bags. Like, I'm, I'm, I will not have pitting against each other.
I think probably you should be involved in that discussion too, obviously.
Yeah, because ultimately...
You're gonna take into the factor.
Well, does that, but does...
We probably shouldn't even be discussing those things right now.
But, does the hub stay with the whole budget thing? Because technically, it's its own, you know, line items, it's its own, like, it's not under the GA budget. It has nothing to do with that, it's its own entity. So it would stay, if it's funded, my guess, by ASO, it would have to stay its own entity because the ASO isn't going to fund the GA budget to pay for this. It would have to stay its own.
It's all meal.
So...
Bruce doesn't realize, the hub we get reimbursed currently now too from the region.
Yeah, the region pays a hundred percent of it, like, it does not come out of county dollars at this point at all.
That's where you're saying that it would be a huge strain on the general if we...
Yes, because if, if the ASO doesn't pay for it, then if it gets kept...
And they're not indicating whether they will and they won't?
We don't know that yet. It's a lot of hurry up and wait.
So that's supposed to...
Super fun for all of us.
Ron was talking about, we're not sure, we have two vehicles in those...
We don't, we don't know what's happening with those yet.
Mm-hmm.
Now, they'll know...
Next Friday.
Next Friday. The, the current region is putting for a...
It's called the Disability Access Point, so that covers long-term and short-term services, um, for like resource and referral for intellectual disability, developmental disability, um, brain injury and some MI, so mental illness. So, resource and referral, so we have submitted a proposal for, to be the statewide disability access point. Um, and so if we get that, then the stuff within the counties, obviously, we can't just kind of start over. So that may, and those conversations will start of like, what goes, what stays, all that kind of...
So next Friday you'll find out.
Yep.
I think May is scheduled to come in and...
Yes.
Talk to us, I can't remember the date, but...
So May is the CEO of the region.
Yep.
Um, she is...
I don't know, I think it was March or April.
Hmm, for whatever reason, I do not have it on my calendar. Um, so, but yeah, she is scheduled and then she will come in and kind of talk about all of that. But I, when, um, so...
Well, unfortunately, this hasn't just happened overnight, this has been going on for a long time.
Years. Years.
We're still not, we still don't know what the heck we're doing.
Nope, and I, when they said this was happening, we fully expected, because we went from thirteen regions down to seven districts.
Yes.
I fully expected it in about three or four years, that the state would say, "Okay, we're gonna take it all now." They skipped that step and they just gone to one, one entity at this point. So it was statewide thing. It was gonna be, everybody thought it was gonna be seven, but it's down to one.
Yep, and it's centralized out of Des Moines, so there's about two hundred people across the state that will be unemployed.
So all these services are just expected to stop and people are just gonna be...
No, the hope is to have it just be a seamless transition to the new entity out of Des Moines. That is, that is the dream, that is the hope.
So if it gives you any comfort, all ninety-nine counties are struggling with their budget right now.
Doing the same thing.
Yes, every, like, across the board.
I used, after the explanation, I see the, I see the need. Because people, if they have a place to go, you know, it's just gonna be wandering around and not getting anything done, so I, I get that.
So once all, so what I'm understanding is once all other budgets are done, if ASO, it could go one of two ways. ASO potentially funds, right? If ASO is like, nah, sorry, once all other budgets are done, if there's money available, then possibly, potentially, it could be funded under the general fund, is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing?
That would be the only option.
That, that would be the only option.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, potentially, possibly, after all other things are paid and funded of like...
Depending on the mental health, so that's out.
Yes, yes. Well, and if it's not, if it does not necessarily fall under mental health, right, it's more of...
Only other thing would be if, if some of that would go under general sub depending on like those court lines like we've talked about.
Yes, okay, so I will redo this as if it is for a full-time entity, okay? Um, that made it, one is done, when, guess when do you guys meet again? When do you guys want me to have this done and brought back?
Well, we meet next Tuesday.
What, ten thirty?
So you're, you're doing like, technically you're doing the Department sixteen one right now.
Yes.
Ten thirty?
I can have it done on our...
No.
I was just gonna say, technically, we are still, we're, we're on it. So, um, yeah, I mean, I can have it for next Tuesday, I can have it done for ten thirty. You tell, you tell me.
It's, it's all, I think, I think we could look at it, but once we get everybody's budget in, Haley does her thing, gives us where we're at. I hate to put you through the work if, if we can look at the county budget in a week and see.
Yeah, but at least we'll know a month, so like I said, I'm gonna offset it with revenues regardless.
Well, and, I mean, it gives us two avenues, right? Of like, please, ASO, like, you know, if you're gonna honor this, you're gonna do that. I mean, we still may in a year end up exactly where we're at, which I won't be here, so that becomes somebody else's thing. Or if it can fall under something else. Um, so is, um, so this was, okay. Yep, so I will do this and so like come back next Tuesday?
If I know or submit the amounts to me and I can just shoot them the reports.
I was gonna say, you tell me what you want.
We're gonna have potentially two meetings next week, one a budget work session and then our regular Tuesday morning one.
Okay.
Why don't you, I would say for saving time and effort, just get a behavior and she can get it out to us. That's my...
Okay.
I'll plug the...
I was gonna, I, I'll go work on it right now and get it over to you. Okay, um, I think that's, it then, um, the one, and, and Ron, I don't know if this is a you thing, Board, I don't know if this is a you thing, trying to figure out, so if this is something that ends up falling under ASO, general fund, wherever it falls, if it remains, if it in fact remains intact, um, I don't know, because I will not be here with U-Pop. I have no idea where he's at in regards to like being on board, not on board. Like, I'm going to need you guys' support to support who's ever in that position, whether it's Michelle, whether it's whoever, right? I'm going to need you guys to kind of help finagle that after, so. Can you do that, please? All right, is that it then?
I think so.
Does there need to be any like approved, seconded?
No, because they won't do that until...
Okay.
At least they haven't any department yet, so...
All right, just making sure, okay, I'm gonna go work on this.
Three minutes.
Okay.
I'm going to go work on this and I'll get it sent to you right away.
Thanks, Monica.
Hopefully mine's not that complicated. Do you know what time it's supposed to stop, the snow?
Nine o'clock tonight.
Oh, great.
And then now coming Friday?
Yeah, it's supposed to be cold and clear tomorrow with light wind, but they said that tomorrow morning the roads are still gonna be a little dicey. Because imagine they'll pull theirs off.
You might get to sleep in tomorrow.
Yeah, if they delay school a couple hours.
Did they cancel school today?
Yeah. I would imagine they'll delay it at least two hours and the plows can get out and put down the salves and stuff.
I'll be driving to Colorado tomorrow.
You're going to Colorado tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
What part?
We're going to Breckenridge.
Really? Oh, skiing, huh?
Yeah.
Ah, my daughter lives in Colorado Springs and she said it's snowing like crazy.
My sister lives in Fort Collins.
Oh, okay, very good, very good.
Yeah, I think we're driving halfway tomorrow and then finishing Friday. And then just a little weekend trip up in Breckenridge and then driving back Monday.
Be careful.
Took us twelve hours to get from Broadway to Colorado Springs.
Oh, that's not bad.
But that wasn't winter, it was in June. Big difference.
Yeah, I heard up there the traffic can get pretty bad with everyone trained to ski and stuff, like up by the ski resort.
Yeah, next Tuesday right now so far, it's pretty light. So if that's the case, then maybe you could do the budget work session after our regular meeting too.
On Tuesday? Oh, it did not happen on a Friday or Thursday today?
Yeah, I don't know what your thoughts are, but unless I get bombarded with a bunch more hand items right now, it'd be...
Another nine-minute meeting like you had, uh...
Possibly.
I don't think we'll probably see what it is for a long time.
Okay, Gillian.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll just go down the list. So first, um, for the salary, you know, I wasn't sure what we were going to decide on salary for me, so I just kept it as what Sue had it right now, but, um, we can discuss that if you want. Um, I conducted a market analysis for HR jobs in this area. Um, my qualifications matched with six positions. Most positions had the lowest salary range, starting at seventy-three thousand plus and highest capping out at one hundred thirty-four thousand. But to be fair, I'm assuming I'd be at the starting salary level at most places, um, so looking at seventy-three thousand possibly. But the other jobs had eighty-five thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy-three thousand, seventy-eight thousand, seventy-seven thousand.
Were those, in your comparisons, were those, um, private sector or were they government?
They were a private sector, yeah. I just looked on Indeed.
Okay. Cause I'm, I was just trying to think of who around us, other than Tima County, they have HR.
Yeah, Fast Dance.
Fast Dance.
Black Hawk has one.
Black Hawk.
Comes from county, does too.
What?
Comes from county, does.
Oh, yeah, and like usually the bigger ones do.
I don't like it, I find.
Part of it, D? Yeah, I didn't look at their salaries, I just went on Indeed and looked up ones I would qualify for and saw those prices. But yeah, most starting salaries at seventy-three thousand at least.
But you got, you got it figured in at eight-two-eight, right?
Yeah, that I just kept as what Sue had it for right now, just because I wasn't sure what we were going to decide on.
Just because it's there doesn't mean we're gonna use it, right?
Right. Which, if we decide on a salary, then I can go in and change it.
Yeah, and then, uh, yours was the second line that had to bag, right?
Yep, I took that out because I won't be needing any part-time help.
All right.
So that's twenty thousand dollars.
Now, this informational technology, the forty-five thousand, what's that for?
Yeah, so that was for the HR software that Sue was trying to look at. And I still would like to look into one and I want to work with Haley on that. We've been kind of looking at some options.
Tyler's technology software has something.
Yeah, so I'm gonna look into that. So I just kept that the same because I think it'd be good to still implement a software because one HR person usually manages fifty to seventy people, so I feel like it would be very beneficial and help me be effi- efficient.
How many, how many people are we dealing with here?
It's in addition to that.
One sixty?
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's in addition to the time, the time that's paid for this.
So what is this, if you can help me out, what is this software? Is it due, if you don't already have a computer program for it?
Yeah, so the one I want to look at is especially helping with the onboarding process, just, um, organizing all the applications. And in the future also, you know, you can write down your interview notes right next to it and it just organizes all that. And in the future, if the same person applies, you can look at your interview, yeah, look at your interview notes and be like, okay, we didn't hire them for this reason. Won't waste my time on that.
So this is ba- uh, just an electronic application that keeps track of all?
Yeah, there's a bunch of other things to it too.
Okay.
But the previous one I was looking at, that was like the main thing that I was working on.
Okay.
Now, do they, in these, in a program like that, is there then a yearly maintenance or update fee or...
I'm not sure on that.
Usually there is, just like all of our...
With, with Tyler, you said that your current software supplier...
They have, they haven't demonstrated something to her, but they said they have something similar to that.
Yeah, so I'm going to take a look at it, me and Haley were talking about it.
Have you looked at one program or have you looked at, are there multiple options? I don't, I don't have a clue, I started asking, I don't know what's available.
Well, the previous HR director was looking at a bunch and she decided on one. And so when I first got hired, that was the main thing I was working on. And so I was in the implementation phase of all of that. And then when she resigned, we put a pause to it and I've still thought about it, thought about how it'd be good to implement a software.
Would you be able to find out what the fee is for updates yearly?
Yeah.
To see what they do.
All right, as you move forward...
Yeah.
Yearly maintenance agreements or whatever they're gonna call them, it could have something to do with licensing.
Mm-hmm. That's, I mean, if there's upgrades or, you know, changes that go on, then...
Yeah, I'm going to look at the Tyler one for sure, just since it already is a software for us.
That's the one, now, if, if you have to have one, I would have, like you to have Tyler, since they're with the whole county.
Mm-hmm.
We can definitely get Ben's opinion, obviously.
Yeah.
Have you spoken with Ben on any of this stuff?
Mm-mm, not yet.
Okay, getting back to your budget, uh...
The educational training, I, was eight thousand, I brought it down, five thousand. Labor relations, I brought up to three thousand because we have been working with a consult for some things and it's been working out very well, so I just brought that up a little bit.
One thing, maybe I don't see it in here right off the bat, uh, when you kind of got everything dumped on your lap about, uh, the meal that we had to have for our safety meeting, uh, is there a way we could put a line item on her, you know what I mean?
Well, technically, wasn't that wellness reimbursable money or not?
I'm not sure what we use that for. I'm not sure what we use that for.
We've never really spent the money out of the county dollar, it used to come with our wellness program through ISAC.
I don't think it happened that.
And it didn't happen that way last year, so that's why I'm, we have to make sure when we spend money for stuff like that, that it's benefit, you know, public purpose. Are we using tax dollars to feed our employees? I mean, you have to be very cautious in that area.
Okay, okay.
Not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying be very cautious. Cause previously we used to get reimbursed, because we called like our lunch and learn and wellness, let the wellness programs change as you know, over the years, so...
Yeah, I think Hy-Vee gave that invoice just straight to Nancy and Alicia, so I think they just handled that.
All of the Department ID names.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I do have, oh, the awards and recognition. I have a budget of fifteen hundred in there. Which, some of that I could use, or some of that I will use for the annual meeting, for, you know, the rewards we used for service and...
But when we combine it with our resmitry and the required training and stuff, too, yeah. So the legal and court stuff? Is that what you were gonna ask on that one, who we were utilizing?
Yeah.
Do you know who that is?
Uh-uh. Cause I was looking at this and I have never pulled money up there.
Do you have a discussion with Ray on that? Uh, I believe it's Mr. Anders.
Oh, yeah, I believe so. That sounds very familiar.
Or which one?
For the labor relations and the legal, I think.
Oh, the labor relations, Ray and I are using a different consult, but for the legal and court, I believe it is Anders. And then when I do go full-time, I don't plan on having to use any health insurance as I'm under my parents still, until...
Really?
Yeah, until I'm twenty-six.
All for the, part of the Affordable Care Act.
Well, the only thing that I seen jump out on me was worth that forty-five thousand. Check with Tyler, I'm sure it's gonna be a lot cheaper.
Yeah, yeah, that, I can look into an update that, I just kept that the same, just to say I'd like to continue looking at it.
The next question is that, when do you think, it's mainly our decision, I guess, us three guys, but when do you think you wanna go full-time?
I know we've been discussing May, I think May would be good.
Cause the next question is, is there enough work for you to do thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty hours a week?
Yeah.
In the count, there is.
You said the average HR person throughout the industry has ninety employees? Is that what they, on average, do?
Or there's usually, yeah, one HR manager for fifty to seventy employees, and so, you know, business might have two HR managers or something.
We have a hundred and sixty employees, it would be under a one percent.
Yeah. Which, they are right now as part-time for, you know, just me trying to do it for no more than twenty-six hours a week. See, I'll definitely have enough work going full-time. I'm excited for it.
And your schooling ends in May, right?
I'll graduate in March, but, yeah. But then I plan on studying for my SHRM certification and taking that in May. So, I mean, we could do earlier if you want, after I get my degree, but I know just previously we discussed May.
I know you had interviews last Friday with the administration.
Yeah.
And, and Byron talked to you at all about the thing I wrote, nobody else?
Nope, I tried sending an email and never got a response, so I'm going to do a follow-up one.
Just might pay a drive. Byron's an easy fellow to talk to.
Yeah.
Just might go out and pop in on him, I don't hope today to be a good...
Yeah.
Probably not today, no. Been busy.
But I definitely need to follow up with him because I haven't heard anything back.
He's gotta take some hot stuff there.
Yeah.
I don't have any other questions, but I think we've got some things we'll need to talk about in our, in our budget work session. To see which directions we wanna go with some of this stuff.
Do you have any idea on salary?
That would be a big question for that meeting.
Can we find out what surrounding counties and stuff they're kinda doing, do we have any kind of information, can we get that?
Did you be able to get that off of that ISAC survey?
ISAC survey, okay, just, just for my own clarification, I just wanna see what other counties are doing.
Yeah, which again, it might be similar to what Sue's salary was and just from my market analysis, looks like the average starting wage was seventy-three thousand.
Well, I don't have any more questions.
Don't?
Okay.
Thank you, Julia.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Perfect.
It's been a while, sorry about that.
Oh, you're good.
That other one was good.
It was.
We still have no answers.
You know, I could look at what boat we were in a few years ago when they switched it.
True.
We, we used to levy our own and then it went to the state and we were in the same boat then, it was like, it survived, but...
And we had a way of paying the bills and we got everything done and then they came in and said, oh, hold on, you know, you gotta do it this way.
So is it just a case of somebody gets in there and says, well, I gotta do something to make it look like I'm doing something, so they make these changes?
I don't know, but it's enough to make you go mental.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, try to reinvent the wheel.
The lady that has assisted Bona with...
She's been awesome, Deb Guard is awesome.
With the sun setting on the region, she has real, a lot of work.
She's been the fiscal agent, she worked for Johnson County, but they're our fiscal agent from our region. So she has to take all the counties and the region's numbers and make it work as a budget for the region on top of it and, and dealing with all of our ins and outs.
Wow.
She's been amazing, and she's emot, you know, she's gonna retire, obviously, now, but, yeah.
So is there anything you guys want me to change in it, or just look at the software?
Take a good look at the Tyler. Yeah, take a, yeah, the software thing. Do some checking on the, those stuff.
Okay, perfect.
They never followed up yet, have they?
No, I was, I think they, there's a short video with it or something, so I'll look at that and then...
A short demo on that Tyler community page.
Yeah, so look at that and then, if I need to contact them, I will.
We won't be doing meetings with that time and attendance, cause hopefully, next month, we'll really start really tiring in. And we'll get you guys involved, all the departments.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, guys.
Have a nice trip.
Thanks, Julia.
Thank you.
Have fun.
I'm going to Colorado.
You snowboard or ski?
Ski. Yeah, I'm excited, I'm going there, or we're driving, I'm going with just a few of my friends. Leaving tomorrow, driving halfway, cause one of my friends I'm riding with, they have a daughter, she's one. So, we're just driving halfway and then Friday, driving the rest, be there.
Stop in the middle of Nebraska somewhere.
Yeah, and then...
Sorry.
So, that's it, I'm...
And then be there all day, Saturday, Sunday, and then head back Monday.
Where, uh?
Breckenridge. I've never been there. My sister lives in Fort Collins, and so when I usually go to Colorado, I'll just visit Fort Collins. Been to Colorado Springs and Estes Park and...
Fort Collins has got a, a very modern, Katheiser Bush one.
Take, might take me a couple ladies to tour that.
And then you can go down to Golden and tour tours.
Tours, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I've toured too, there, breweries.
Well, drive, have safe travels.
Thank you, you guys too.
See ya. All right, I'll go over what I have on first, yeah. For the eighteenth agenda, is Minutes Agenda Budget Work.
Can I make a motion to keep it at that?
So, if it stays, if it stays light like that and then you wanna do our regular business stuff and then do a work session?
Will it push you too much?
I'll know by Monday morning, cause I'll probably work on it all weekend.
Okay, well, like, I don't wanna push you that.
No, I know. I need to get it done because honestly, we, the, the levees, I know I can't go over, but I'd still wanna see it as a whole, what we're looking at, otherwise. I could put it through revenues later, but...
Put yourself out, you don't want, we don't need you, we don't need you.
It feels good, you don't need that.
Yeah, well, we've all been sick, it sounds like, everybody is.
And if that doesn't work on, on, uh,
Tuesday?
Tuesday, then what are we looking for as an alternate?
It works for everybody.
You said Wednesday doesn't work for you, is that correct?
No, I told, I'm open the, the whole week.
The whole week?
Yeah.
You had something one morning, didn't you?
I've gotta get my permanent crown put on at nine o'clock on Thursday. I don't know how long that takes.
No, that's fine, what about you, Ron?
But I'm available Wednesday or Friday.
Okay, Friday mornings, I usually have my business meeting for Auditor Association at nine, so nine to ten, I'm usually out on Fridays.
The best would be if we could get it all done on the eighteen.
Okay, well, let's shoot for that.
Okay, and then we have the six-thirty assessors meeting that night.
Correct.
Cool.
You guys will be, you guys are gonna be pro.
It'll get better.
It will?
Yeah.
All right. Will you let me know when it's...
Just remember when the county attorney's gonna do that.
Okay, I was gonna say, yeah, yeah, cause I had everything already plugged in, are you guys done? Find me before you leave.
Okay.
Well, I got it from, so I have an answer for you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.